All right, let's call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor from Pennsylvania.
Here.
Councilwoman Lee.
Here.
Councilwoman Peggy.
Here.
Councilwoman Futter.
Here.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Eustace Laurie from the Seventh-day Adventist Church to come up and offer, and we stand for our invocation, remain standing for the flag.
Let us pray. God, I thank you for bringing us all here this evening. We come from various backgrounds, but one thing that unites us is the passion to serve, a passion for this city, and I love to see things progress here in Tashby. Lord, as we come together to discuss our wonderful city, I pray that you remind us in the spirit of the Fourth of July and our Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal and are due rights. I pray, Lord, as we discuss, that we, that we are able to be agreeable even if we disagree with one another. Again, we are all here for the love and passion for this city, and Jesus, amen, my friend.
Amen. Let's join for the flag salute. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Make me seated. Before we proceed to the consent agenda, I would like to point out that we have a new clock that's pretty much visible for everyone. Ashley will be manning the clock and will advise people when they have 30 seconds left, and when they're out of time, then it will come to me for me to say, "I'm sorry, you're out of time," or whatever. So this way, we want to try and make it fair for everyone, and everyone can see it. And if you do come to the podium to speak, you know, kind of look at it, and it will count down backwards, right? All right. I'd also like to tell you that we do have ordinances that regulate all of these things. It, it's not arbitrary that we just decide how many minutes to give you or whatever. We have all of that backed up by our ordinances, and if any of you would like to get a copy of that, you can see Ashley after the meeting. All right, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Does anyone in the audience wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Counsel?
Yes, madam, here. Could we have number three and number five removed, please?
Do you want to make a motion?
Honorable mayor, can we also make a slight change to item two? Get a clerical error. It should not also say "special radiance" during the recording of the meeting.
Right. Thank you. She just told me that two minutes ago, and I forgot, right? All right, um, do you want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve of item three and five removed, and item two, as per.
Okay.
And also that.
It's moved and seconded. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, it was five zero. Audience oral and written communications, the city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed in the organization if the person is representing one. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time the item is called for discussion by the mayor. Questions on non-agenda items should be directed to the council or staff and should be submitted to the city clerk ahead of the meeting. No action can be taken by the council on matters not listed on the agenda except in certain specified circumstances. All right, are there any public comments?
My name is Carl Craig. Live 702 in Tashby, and for 42 years. A few days ago, in fact, it was at our conference with the mayor, I discussed, of course, I did the fireworks, we were going to have a concert, you know, but it's limited to just two locations, about a low-power radio station. We have two individuals. I won't give up Cory. And I won't give up this guy, who has done this in the past. It is not expensive. It's very reasonable and low-power, but handles the city. Back to the council meeting, back, one of the ladies from the school said, "Boy, the kids from the school could do it." And anyway, I would like the city to, you did look into it years ago, I think, Greg. I would like to see now that we have an expert, maybe we can do it. Right, Paul? Okay, that's what I, I might need to look into it, okay?
Thank you.
I'm Peter Graff, City.
Wait, one moment, one more minute, Mr. Graff. Fox, Steve, naughty. Go ahead, sorry.
I'm Peter Graff, City. I have a couple documents for Councilman Hecky, Councilman Davies. The documents that Councilman Davies and Councilman Hecky are getting, these are documents related to email conversations back and forth with myself and Chase Johnson here tonight, and just by chance, she decided to show up tonight. But you're going to hear from him about how I'm not supposed to be heard, how I waited too long, and you're going to hear about this document that I didn't produce. Well, I made a request to the city attorney, Public Information's Act request, requesting the document that I had given Chief Craig requesting a hearing within 10 days, that's subsectionary section six. And I did that that day I was terminated. He has now sent me an email for, I'm sorry, Matt Murphy, he's a dispatcher, has sent me an email saying that the document doesn't exist. So I take issue with this because I have several emails back and forth here with Mr. Johnson, and I'll just give you the example, the top paper there that I gave you, Councilman Davies, Councilman Hecky. You can see in the second paragraph there that, and bear in mind, this is now somebody who never filled out the paperwork to be heard, but this is Chase Johnson's response. After your termination for cause, the city offered you multiple allegations to provide you an administrative appeal. However, the following city repeated efforts to schedule the union or legal hearing representatives failed to, to schedule any hearing date. But, man, here's my issue with that. I don't set that date. He doesn't set that date. You don't set that date. He doesn't set that date. You guys set that date for section D. So why is he saying that he's attempting to set a date? Not only set a date, if you continue creating on that, it says, "I'm attempting to set a date with an outside party or an outside magistrate and judge." But now we're back to the point that I've never even appealed for this according to Chief Craig or his dispatcher. I've never even, I've never even turned in a document. So now I'm asking you, what is it? Which one? Did I not turn in the document? Or are you trying to make arrangements for me? So I'm asking tonight, my councilman, because you're both at large, I'm asking you guys to ask some airways to give a directive, and you can read this paper as I, as I submitted it.
30 seconds.
To give a directive to Greg Aaron to ask for a mutual aid assist, ask for somebody outside this area, because I obviously know a lot of law enforcement in this area, go to Teleri City, go to Porterville City, go to Teleri County, ask them to provide a sworn peace officer to investigate this matter, not private detectives, not attorneys, not spending a ton of our money. This is a mutual aid agreement, and if not, anything, it may even be free. So I don't know why we're not doing this. It should have been done that way in the beginning. So I'm asking you, Greg, to contact somebody. If you think I've done something wrong, prove it. I have proof that I have it. So we, this is where we need to go. You need to contact a mutual, or a, uh...
Mr. Graff, I'm really sorry, but you're out of time.
That's all right, okay. But Greg, you need to contact somebody to bring this arrangement. That's what I'm asking, because you can't hire private detectives to come up here and ask inclusionary questions to people that weren't even related to the matter.
Mr. Graff, thank you very much, but I'm sorry you're out of time.
Councilman Davies, Councilman Hecky, any of you guys have any concerns or questions before I do?
I'd just like to make the statement that the night that I was sworn in was the first time I heard you come to the podium and ask for input regarding your situation. And to date, I have had absolutely no dialogue regarding your situation. Rightly or wrongly, I don't know, other than I've not been made impressed of any issue brought back to the council, other than being told that it was an employee matter and the council could not act on it.
This is not on the agenda. And if I, if I could respond to that, Councilman Hecky, there was a past comment made by Councilman Wallfry, if you recall, uh, three meetings ago.
I'm sorry, Mr. Graff.
That nobody ever spoke to him.
Mr. Graff, I can do this all night long. I'm really sorry, but you're out of time. I need to have you take your seat.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm just asking you to do your job. Do you represent us and to give Greg Aaron a directive to do what's right? You can see you're trying to hide and conceal things. You've been doing it for 25 years, it's time, and it's over, it's time, you stop wasting time in life.
You need to take your seat, Mr. Graff, I'm sorry.
My name is Mrs. Fox, I'm 12th floor, Mayor Ray Graff. Apparently, I've been missing a lot of excitement. So the only thing I do want to say is, Peter, I'm requesting all of your records tomorrow. Maybe after I get your records, maybe we can talk and you can let me know what your problem is, other than consistently harassing people.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Stay out of the line.
Excuse me. We don't need any comments from the back of the room. Go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
Honorable mayor and city council, I wish to, I'm George Sandy, I've been president of the mayor for about 24 years, I guess, something like that. And I want to discuss just briefly, uh, some of the activities that are conducted in the closed sessions. And so I noticed in the announcement of this, it cited code 54956.8, and I have a copy here, and the second paragraph kind of applies to the transaction, the city's right of first refusal on handling transactions. So I'd like to read that, that says, "However, prior to the closed session, the legislative body of the local agency," that would be the council, "shall hold an open and public session in which it identifies its negotiators, the real property which the negotiators may concern, and the persons or persons with whom its negotiators may negotiate." Now, I assume the city manager is the negotiator in these transactions, and I would like to clarify who the negotiators are on the part of the seller and the potential buyer. That is usually handled by stating who the seller is. That is usually stated in the agenda by naming the seller as the negotiator for the other side. Okay, that's in the written agenda. And I see that it's covered in the written agenda, but it says, "However, prior to the closed session, you shall hold an open and public session." Now, is that written thing an opening public session, or does the public even care what happened after the council meeting is over and you all go into hiding?
You have 30 seconds.
Do you want me to answer that? Yes, am I? Uh, we, number one, we held an open and public hearing before we landed the closed session. It wasn't elaborate, now it is. It's just simply stating what the agenda says. When we come out of the closed session, if there's action, it's reportable, and in this case, it was, I reported it, and in fact, I reported it directly to you.
Yes, you're correct.
Now, there was nobody else around, so it was hard to hold a hearing of that, of that sort of.
All right, well then.
Mr. Sandy, I'm really sorry, but you're out of time.
What?
You're out of time, sir.
Well, I have another second to go with. May I have another three minutes?
No, I'm sorry, you have to be consistent.
Come on, here we tonight.
I think we really ought to discuss this because it's very important.
You know what I would suggest? I would suggest that you meet with the city manager and make this an agenda item on the next meeting, and then we can give more time for your discussion. Would that be okay?
I don't believe that's the route to go. I think the council, all the important time before the council, I knew what I had to say about the closed session, and if you can find yourself, if you need it, give me three minutes, and I think it's quite important.
I, I agree with that, but I can't give you any more time, sir. I suggest that you would meet with staff and, and make it an agenda item, and you would have a lot of time that way. Okay?
Shameful.
It's not okay.
It's not.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
Hello. I'm Angela, the Garcia will be here. I'm here in relations to the allegations filed against Pete Graff, Officer Graff. Um, if you know about the incident.
I'm sorry, you gave me a name, but could you give me your area of residence?
Oh, the Marrow Springs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For anyone that doesn't know about the situation, they live with Graff. Uh, for the time being, he didn't believe that I lived in a place where this bike was found with a name on it, and I do have knowledge of this bike, but wouldn't know about it. And I'm just saying that, um, he had a contact with me at one point, so it was kind of right for him not to take it, considering that was his, my last place of knowledge of his thing. And, uh, let me see. Yeah, so it was written in crayon, and Officer Graff did the right thing by not taking it, thinking that it belonged to me. And then went on to question by, I'm guessing, private investigators. Sorry, little words. Private investigators. Their questions were sent towards the direction of not getting a full story, but getting answers in a way that they wanted them. So it kind of felt like they were going after Pete Graff. I haven't opened for a little bit, he's seeing my situation, but that's all I really want to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments?
That's Wallfry, city resident. I think they learned this from Graff, ever. And we spent a lot of time on it, spent a lot of money on it. It's, it's so kind of rude, you know, that it's hard to figure it out. But I think it's about time that I just kind of, one way or another, whether it goes for the city or it goes for Pete, it's just, it's just taken up too much of time. And it's, and it's really, it's really a council out of habit here, you know, with the council. I really encourage you, uh, to, uh, put it into it, one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Nice to see you back. Nice to have you show last week. Chris Lawson.
Can I have your area of residence, too?
Golden Hills.
Thank you.
Business in Tashby. Couple things I want to talk to you about, right? First, I want to talk to you about how's investigation going against Jay Sloss. Sloss. Have you got the paperwork on that? Right here.
I have received a letter.
You have received? Is there going to be investigation on that?
I'm not going to talk about personnel issues at this time.
Okay. Chief, I got a question for you, if you don't mind me asking. The question is, right, um...
Mr. Sloss, please direct your question to the mayor. And please note that this is for comments, not for dialogue.
I want to know, is it, is it in Tashby, the city police department, did they patrol Golden Hills?
Want to answer it?
No? Okay, well, let me tell you about the incident that happened a while back that I talked to you about, chief.
Let me just, let me just stop him right there. We do not patrol Golden Hills or any part of current county, Paul. We did have a mutual aid agreement that allows for the transfer of resources when needed, just to be clear.
Okay, for, for me to be clear, right, when I see at Savannah's Old Town Center, I see Tashby PD cruising through there, right, and also has an incident a while back that I talked to the chief on, right, where people were fighting at Big Poppa's and they were getting dropped off at Savannah's, I have a problem with that. And then when I see Tashby PD cruising towards Savannah's in the middle of the night, what are they doing on that side? There's a problem. They shouldn't be on that side, they shouldn't be patrolling that side. I don't understand why Tashby PD got to be doing that. If there's no call, or if there's nothing, the chair told me that says there should not be nobody on that side. Am I correct? You are correct. Right. So would you like me to start filming them being on that side? Because that's what they're doing, chief. They don't tell you the whole truth. There you go, there's a fight over that Big Poppa's, they dropped him off at Savannah's, they dropped him off at P-Dub, they patrol over there, well, they shouldn't be over there.
Do you have 10 seconds?
Now, I have a, right here, I have a, I'm leaving Tashby. I have a lot of, they cut it out, Wayne. I have a, I have a, I have a, I would like to sit down and call you. I know, uh, I guess my phone's busy. Is that correct?
You left a message for me. I returned your call, I'll give you my direct, click the voice on, say your voice on box is full.
Okay. And the city of, the, the city does not have the doghouse, remember, on file?
You're out of time, sir, I'm really sorry.
Could I sit down and talk with you soon?
Come by.
What time would be in the meeting with you?
Call me.
Okay. Mrs. Wickens, did you get my phone call that I called you? The last five, few minutes of this screen?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay.
Any other public comments?
Mike Puffer, City of Tashby. For the last, um, team council meeting, we heard from Mr. Graff. I've read documents that he's produced, I've read other things, and I've had conversations with Pete. I was a former faculty in the union, and timeliness is the essence. And for everything that I can see from the documents that Mr. Graff has produced and been able to give to me, he does not have the proof that he met the time of this. And he continues to come up here and talk, and I understand and I feel for him and the effects that it has had on his life, but at some point, this is not the form anymore, and he needs to move on. And I'm sorry, but he's wasting everybody's time. I have experience. If I file a grievance, I lose the grievance automatically. If he, if I give a document to the, to management as a union rep, I had copies, and my employee had a copy, but I filed on their behalf. He shouldn't need to go to the U of U and show it. He should be able to come to you and say, "Here's the copy of the document signed by me for his union." And if he can't do it, then his case is moved.
No.
And that's the way it works, and I'm really sorry. I've had, I've spent time listening to Pete. I tried to take everything into account, and it's just the waste of our time at this point in the city. We need to move on. We need to move on, and the case needs to be laid and addressed. And Pete, if, he's probably even out of his guidelines and timelines for a public filing in a court case, because there's lawful termination timelines and statute limitations. Looked at every, everything, it's just a layman. A layman with labor relations experience, and he's wasting our time, and I'm about out of time, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other, any other public comments before I close them?
Jack DeFur, I hope and pray...
I'm sorry you put your area of residence, sir.
Pardon?
Your area of residence.
Residence?
Yes.
I have a home in Bayesville, and I have property here in Tashby, the city taxes here.
Thank you.
I hope and pray that this meeting is not an example of the disgraceful one last time that I was here. Mr. Hecky, thumbs up for you for being the most intelligent one here. Me and my wife have had over 200 foster children, 200 foster children, period, 30 years. In 2003, my wife was Mother of the Year. The headlines in Tashby News read, "Glove's caring for children," and it's true. In 2006, I was Father of the Year, and the headlines were, "Glove's nurturing children," and that also is the truth. At March 20th, 2018, I was handcuffed. And the reason I was handcuffed, I went onto five schools here in Tashby, checking our school's children's protection and security, which there is a breach of, there's hardly any. I don't understand why I was handcuffed, because in the police report, there was no crime committed. Correct, chief? There was no crime committed. And in the police report, it said I had no lawful reason to go into the school. I take my grandchild to school every day, and I pick him up every day. As a parent, I had every reason to be on that school. The only other reason I had, when I fought in Vietnam, I fought for the reasons why I could walk anywhere I want. Being handcuffed is not pleasant. I worked in the prison for 30 years. You know, I, I've never been handcuffed before.
You have 30 seconds?
30 seconds. We need to have more time. How can we get more time? Anyways, uh, Time Magazine and Tashby News' kids are speaking of, they want more protection, and they're saying enough in Time Magazine. The history of 250 years of school shootings, in 1815 was the first school shooting. 250 years ago.
Your time is up.
What have we done? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Pete Graff, he's taking all the trouble.
Hey, you're out of time. Excuse me. Here's us.
Clint Davies, uh, I'm not going to tell you, brother. I have some comments prepared, and I'm just going to just go ahead and just throw them in the trash for today. The slide show that came up, it really moved me. Last summer, one of my friends, uh, showed him was sexually assaulted. And certain people at the department, they just, they just looked at it, and they just brushed it off, you know? And it was not a big deal. There was nothing happening with this, a 13-year-old. We contacted all the city council, city, city council members. The one went up here that responded, leaving the two freshmen out of this, was Ken Hecky. That showed any concern. Any concern. But he said his hand were tied. It's probably because he didn't want to undermine the police chief as he's been accused of doing. The other place, this, this person lives right around the corner from you, Mayor Williams. Right around the corner from you. How far away do you live from, from now entry school? Our police department is more concerned with COVID enforcement, okay? I look at the number of arrests this week versus the number of COVID enforcement violations. 30-something arrests, 40-something COVID enforcement violations. Their job is to protect the people. Now, make sure the grass is green. It's, it's a disgrace that police officers come by and put inspectors on their houses, and that's something for the building inspector or for the fire department? You know? Then we put a billboard up, say, for the state and city current county. Why look at the numbers? We're in the 29th percentile according to the FBI. That's not good. Comondale is 30th. Comondale is safer than Tehachapi. You know? But all we do is, we honor ourselves. Every time, every time I open up a newspaper, it's another awards ceremony. "Oh, they're doing such a great job. They're doing such a great job." Pictures like this, you know? "Oh, we're so awesome." You know who else did that? This jerk. Yeah, look at all those medals he gave himself. Oh, that's, that's Newmarket, I see.
Thank you.
And furthermore, this organization that gives us high ranking, they're a trade organization that represents alarm companies and makers of security cameras. Rating being one of them.
You have 30 seconds?
So, we subsidize rate by giving them a grant to buy cameras, and they give us a high ranking, and we put a poster, pat ourselves on the back. You guys should be ashamed. You know, when I was a missionary, I was screwing off a lot of mission presidents that would be down there sitting there lecturing. And then I told them, "Okay, I'll, President Warren, I'll do my best." He turned to me and he said, "Alder, Davies, I'm not asking for your best." He didn't say the next part, which was the lie. He was like, "Your best ain't good enough. We demand better."
Your time is up. Thank you. Any other public comments before we move on? Any other public comments? All right, then, um, we'll go to item three. Mr. Hettie?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one question on an item that was not clear to me. This is in the check register, and this was regarding the railroad management company for the sewer slash annual railroad fees for $521.
Or, no, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that charge is from the railroad for our right to cross the railroad with our sewer line. We pay that every year. Is it really?
Yep.
Wow. Well, there you go, folks. Did everybody hear that from Mr. Marsh?
No.
I think that's important, uh, that's an important point. Uh, I did not know what that charge was for, but again, that is for the riposte. We pay the railroad for the right-of-way. I guess it would be considered an easement. We are, actually, at least, uh, if we're paying for it, for our sewer line to run across the right-of-way. So there you have it, $521. And Madam Mayor, I have nothing more. I'll make a motion that we approve the check register as presented.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agreed.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Um, number five, Mr. Hettie?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I was looking at the, um, number four.
Madam Mayor, I need to review myself as I'm going to deploy the bar aside.
Thank you.
Mr. Davies, don't go too far. We're going to make this quick. I'll make a motion that we, uh, leave the bar aside. Don't ask for my staff.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Now, number five.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just have, uh, just some procedural questions regarding the treasurer's report. Who actually generates that report?
This is generated by the accounting department.
Okay. Uh, the accounting department generates the report for the treasurer. And then who reviews the treasurer report for the accuracy of the items that are listed on the actual report?
That's the city manager, chief financial officer, and our city treasurer. We'll all miss that.
Okay, so, so the treasurer is involved in that review process?
Absolutely. And Ms. Choller is in the audience, and she'd like to speak to, and she absolutely is integrally involved. What does this mean?
Super. Yeah, Ms. Choller, would you like to say a few words about that?
Susan Choller, City Treasurer. Um, yeah, in addition to, um, the treasurer's report, it's something that I discuss with Hannah on a regular basis. To know where the fund is, and I look there for how we're, um, you know, how we're making sure the city's contacted.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And on that, I'll make a motion that we proceed with, um, executing the treasurer's report as presented by staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Um, Development Services Director reports, number six.
Madam Mayor, council members, this is the first of three items I have reviewed tonight. This is the second amendment to the public bike and pedestrian path agreement that we currently have with Tehachapi Cummings County Water District. The original agreement and the first amendment were, uh, approved by this council in 2013 and 2014 respectively. And they govern, um, a series of easements in analog run, running north to south between Tehachapi Boulevard and, uh, and close to Highline Road, not quite to Highline. Um, and, uh, it's for easements to construct, operate, maintain, repair, and replace the bike and pedestrian path uh, there that we sort of just call the analog run bike path. Uh, so you've probably heard us discuss that. So, as the council is aware, about a year and a half ago, the city secured additional TDA funding from the current council governance to extend that bike path uh, from its current terminus, which is, uh, I don't have the exact number, maybe 800 feet or so more to Highline, to Highline. Um, and then also to construct a small parking area, an asphalt parking area there on Tucker Road. There's currently a dirt parking area there, uh, below the ID4 dam. Um, and, uh, and so, in order to execute that project, we need to complete the easements necessary for those two purposes. So, the city attorney, working with TCCWD's attorney, drafted an amendment, um, to the original agreement to govern this extended amount of easement. So, all the same terms from the original agreement are simply being extended to these additional easement areas. And so, uh... I'm just trying to see if we have an exhibit. A useful exhibit. There, there, if you go to page like 42, actually, of the 40 and 42 of the PDF, kind of show the easement areas, that's the expanded parking area. We already have an easement for the parking area. We're getting it a little larger in order to complete it. And then if you go, uh, two pages up to 40, you'll see roughly the extension, but it's drawn like a surveyor draws something, so it's not super easy to understand. Uh, but that's an extension of that bike path immediately adjacent to Mary Canal, uh, that's running on their property. So, with that, um, that's the proposed, uh, focal point of the amendment. And staff recommends approve, uh, asks you to approve the second amendment to the analog run public bike and pedestrian path path master. And if you have to answer any questions, go ahead.
Any questions from the audience regarding this item? Counsel?
Just a comment. It's a, it's a very well-used bike path. If you are out and about on any particular day, social weekends, Tehachapi's become a destination for a lot of cycling enthusiasts, uh, especially now with Grandpa coming up. But this is a great path for those who don't want to just rely on, strive on, just inside of a street called White Line. But this is a path that's off the, off the streets, and I think it's well-used and well worth it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, do we have a estimated number of what that will cost to, um, complete that extension?
Yeah, the budget for the project is $308,000. Um, it is, we're not out to bid yet, so I don't have the formal numbers from construction. But that's our target project budget, total project budget. And it is, if, if it goes well, it's 100% grant funded. So, uh, I've got money out of pocket. But again, we'll see. I've got to get out to bid and see how many clients it turns out to be.
Uh, thank you. So, $308,000 to go 800 feet with the bike path. I'm a fiscal conservative, and I have a hard time with expenditures of this size, larger or smaller, when it comes to very specific usage of infrastructure. I'm not necessarily against the project, but I think we have to all remember, and it's not only for the council and for the staff, it's for the public. Grant money is your money. Grant money is not free money. There is no such thing as free money. So, again, I'm not against the project. Uh, we have to be cognizant of what these types of things cost all of us. It doesn't grow on trees. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no further comments. And thank you, Mr. Sloss.
I'd echo what you said. It is a grant. It is your money. It's our money. Everyone in this room pays taxes. And we send it off to the state. We send it up to the federal government. And I write a big check every year. And anytime we get some of our money back here in Tehachapi, that's a good thing. Now, we might disagree on the cost of a project, but also, when you see that people are visiting here, they're, uh, uh, using our facilities. They're also purchasing meals in restaurants. Uh, they are staying in hotel rooms. So, it's not just that it's, doesn't have some kind of benefit, not just to the community here, but there is some benefit financially, whether it's soft dollars or hard dollars, there is a benefit, so. But I agree, it is pricey. We can talk about engineering, just a roadway or whatever. Jake, Madam Mayor?
Okay. I should have just looked at the exhibit. Um, it's, I was off by quite a margin. The path itself is more like 1,600 linear feet, and the parking lot is also part of that cost. So, just, I apologize for being off by so much.
So, the parking lot as well. That's a big difference.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Smith, I totally agree with you. Yeah, it is nice to get our money back, but we have a, we have a, the last time I checked, it's about a 22 trillion dollar. People don't even understand what trillion is. There are so many zeros on the end of those numbers. They just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And at some point, we as a collective society, I'm, it's fun writing bikes. Don't get me wrong. It's fun exercising. It's fun doing a lot of the things. But let me tell you what, when it comes down to flushing the toilet with Mr. Marsh, or getting fresh water from Mr. Marsh's department, or having police protection from the chief, those are essential services and a focus for our collective society. We, we need to pay attention to where these expenditures are going, uh, how they're being consumed, and, and be aware that it is our money that's being spent. Yes, it's coming back. We write the check, it goes out. It's nice to get it back. But there are certain priorities for essential services that, that take a higher level of concern. So, thank you very much, and, uh, I'll make the motion that we, uh... Is there public comment?
Yeah, I, I call for public comment.
I do.
Mr. Mike Puffer, Tehachapi, Mr. Hecky, I respectfully disagree with you. This makes our town more valuable. And you want essential services, you grow your town. You grow your town by having these things for people to use. I pay my taxes. This benefits me. You don't have any problem with serving for the effort that benefits you, but now something that benefits the rest of society and, and leads to increased healthcare. Our increase in health, decrease in healthcare costs. It's a win-win for the city to have bike paths. It brings money into our town every year to the tune of thousands and thousands of dollars. This bike path will more than pay for itself. Please do the right thing, council people, and pass this, that, and the item.
Thank you. Do you need a motion?
I'm sure that, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded as recommended by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Number seven.
Public Mayor Council members, my next item for you is the police parking lot project notice of completion. As you guys will recall, we entered into a contract with Naval Berthwaite for the police parking lot project um, in 2018, following a walkthrough by city staff who said they determined that all contract items had been completed. And at this time, the notice of completion needs to be filed and closed out of the contract. Um, and so my recommendation is that you approve the notice of completion for the police parking lot project. Direct staff to the board this time. Happy to answer the questions.
Any questions from the audience concerning this item? Counsel?
Um, I just wanted to make the public aware that when I first came to counsel, well, that was one of the first things we took over on, and it was $247,000 for the parking lot. And I was just flabbergasted. And it's the cost of construction. You know, these people are getting $50, $60 an hour, and so on and so forth. So, um, just take that into consideration when you think about the bike path and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Do I have a motion?
I moved an item seven, the completion of the public, of the police parking lot. We passed.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded as recommended by staff. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Um, number eight, sir.
My last item, honorable Mayor Council members, for you tonight is the second reading of amendment ordinance number 14-03-717, which is the Tehachapi zoning code. Um, I'll read all the chapter numbers at the end. Um, just as a background, again, for you all, um, we adopted a brand-new zoning code in October of 2014, and then since that time, had a couple of amendments to the zoning code. Largely, the original two were targeting, and it's minor conflicts that we were identifying. We wanted to make sure we're clear. This third amendment does some of that, but then it also addresses, um, you know, some items that operationally we feel could be better run. Um, instead of going through them in detail, because we discussed them during the public hearing in the first meeting, I'll, we'll go back, and I'm happy to answer questions. You guys have. Um, but the original meeting, um, was held on June, well, I should also tell you, the planning, the city planning commission, who hears all these items first, and you guys charged with the duty of understanding the zoning code in greater detail, heard this on May 13th, 2019, and unanimously approved and recommended approval to you all at the council. And then, of course, the public hearing, the first reading, was held on June 17th, 2019. Therefore, uh, this is the second read and the adoption step for these modifications. And so, staff recommends that you adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Tehachapi, amending ordinance number 14-03-117, or, I'm sorry, 717, chapters 210, 320, 330, 440, 510, 710, 729, 10960, 975, and 1110 of the Tehachapi zoning code pursuant to sequel guideline section 15061, D3, general rule exemption. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the audience? Are there any questions from the audience concerning this? Counsel?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I went through the painful process of reading all this today. And I do agree, Jay, it's painful when you get into the level of verbiage that's included in some of these ordinances and some other things. Nevertheless, under page nine, these are just some of my concerns. I'll explain those concerns to you folks when I read through this. But one of the items talking about enforcement and penalties. Violations of this chapter constitute a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not more than $500 or by imprisonment in the county jail not to exceed six months or by both such fine and imprisonment. And I guess I have a fundamental problem with that because we all live in a society where we are expected to do the right thing. Some people don't, but at that point, there are remedies that can be taken. But I have a fundamental problem approving a change to an ordinance that includes language that's going to penalize you residents.
If you'd like, there's, the only edit is a typographical change from the number two, I'm sorry, from the number one to the number two.
Understand that.
So, that section exists in our code now for years.
And I still have a problem with it.
That's fine. I'm just saying that you're not making this decision tonight, you're only...
I understand that. Thank you. Just for further clarification, our general penalty in the first title of our ordinance makes violation of ordinances a misdemeanor. That's been... Still... Thank you, Mr. Shorter, for that clarification. And I still have a problem with it. Because we had for many years, most of you folks that have been here for quite a while, remember the Little Caesar's pizza man? He stood on that corner out there like Jack in the Box for years, shaking his sign in sleek, in under-degree temperatures, and he was doing his job to advertise selling slices of pizza. And I think the change to our ordinance, if I've read this correctly, it eliminates those types of signs, sign walkers, I believe is what those types of folks are called. And, you know, I would urge anybody that feels that I'm wrong in what I'm going to say to please speak up. We had the Little Caesar's guy and I think we had Liberty Tax Service. Those are the only two sign walkers I think we've ever seen, or sign presenters. Can anybody else think of anything else? Madam Mayor, is it okay to ask the public? The point being is, you know, do we really need to change ordinance? And do we need to do things that are going to penalize somebody for going out and trying to advertise for the Little Caesar's pizza?
So, once again, just for clarification, you're not changing that. We're not asking you to do that. This, the way the ordinance reads currently about the change to the one to two says that you cannot have sign walkers in downtown area. The Little Caesar's guy could continue doing the sign, bringing it out. As long as he is on the property that he is establishing on, right? He can't go across the corner, across the way and be in front of somebody else's restaurant. As long as he stays on his property, right, it's okay.
No, it's not. I'm sorry. No, sign walkers are currently prohibited. There was a, there's meant, the intent was always, the original intent, the original adoption was no sign walkers in downtown. I believe that there's currently a prohibition against sign walkers outside of the downtown, but not a prohibition in the downtown. And the intent was to simplify the code and just to say, we're not doing sign walkers. I don't, those two, I certainly respect. I mean, they, the news did an article on the Little Caesar's guy down in Bakersfield and it's a really neat story. So, I recognize the emotional component of that. But I would advise, from a staff perspective, that sign walkers can go off the rails a little bit. Like, it's, this is more of a council-level decision. Do you guys like the idea? Because if you allow the guy, allow the guy that's got a cool emotional story to do Little Caesar's, then you gotta allow the guy to stand on the corner and point to the strip joint down the street in county, too. Like, the code doesn't allow you to pick and choose the content of the sign in that regard. So, I understand the thought.
But we don't have a strip joint and we're not pointing at the county.
Correct. But so, when that happens, though, if you change the rules, then you're violating their constitutional rights because you're targeting them instead of having a set of rules that is equal for all. That's a big, you know, equal for all is a big part of your...
I would just as soon see, as a citizen of this community, if Conan's Bakery is going to advertise, you know, a $9.95 boy sandwich and they want to come out with a sign walker during the lunch hour period, I don't have a fundamental problem with that. And I think the council really needs to take a look. Have we really ever had a problem as simple as that with the Little Caesar's guy? And again, whatever the tax, I think it was Liberty, I'm not sure. Do we really want to impose more restriction on the people in our community when it comes to stuff like this? And I'm not necessarily against the remainder of some of the changes, but I do have some other comments. But I think that one, we ought to, we ought to go back and take a look at. If it comes up to where it ultimately is a problem down the road, let's address it at that point. But for the time being, we're making changes and we are, we're doing things to the public that we really don't have a problem with. That's the way I read this. Okay, so that's, that's the first thing. I think there was another one, very specifically, I saw Ray Hadad in here. He came to me, he must have, I think he left. Nevertheless, he came to me several months back pertaining to when there was, I don't know, baseball, football, something was going on and he had pennants outside of his sports bar. And I understand, I did not go back and verify it, but I understand that he was written up or counseled or whatever it was. I mean, Chief, you can add to that. I don't know the situation and I didn't take it any further. He was very upset at the fact that because of these pennants being around his building that were in the ambiance of a sports activity, he was requested to take them down. Again, are we, are we to a level in our community to where we're going to prohibit a sports bar owner from, from pennants?
Totally understand your point. Again, I cannot stress this enough. You cannot pick sports bar and say pennants are okay for sports bar, but they're not okay for these other guys. And so, if you don't prohibit pennants, by the way, that's not a change. Pennants have been prohibited in the downtown since 2014.
And I still have a problem with it.
Fine, but my point is still this, is that you'll end up looking like Rosedale Highway in the county.
I totally disagree with you.
Okay. Well, if you have no rules, then every business gets busier trying to get everyone's attention when you drive down the road. One feather sign creates another feather sign and one pennant creates another pennant. You have sign codes so that, because businesses are all about catching your eye, which I don't oppose, that's, that's part of making your business. But if you want to clean downtown, I strongly recommend that you do not loosen the standards on the number, quantity, and showiness of signs or otherwise, we're going to drive down Tehachapi Boulevard and have just an overload of signs because that's what business owners try to do. But, you know, that's why we have sign code.
I believe that our business owners that are in this community have a higher standard than that. And I say that because Tehachapi, Tehachapi stands on its own merit. We're not Rosedale Highway, we're never going to be, well, Tucker may be that somewhere in the near future. But nevertheless, downtown Tehachapi is not that and I don't think we're ever going to get there. And I think that the caliber and the quality of our business owners in the downtown area have enough concern for not making the place look like an advertising disaster to maintain some level of order. So, just another concern that I have. Home occupation permits.
Go ahead, I'm listening, sir. Please go ahead.
Okay. Home occupation permits.
What page are we on?
Uh, sorry, page 13, section 9.40, sort of in the middle of the page there.
Got it.
Home occupation permits, okay. People that have home businesses, small businesses, to a certain extent, that's their first attempt at becoming a self-employed business owner. Yeah, you convert the spare bedroom to an office, you know, you put a desk and a computer in there and you see what it's all about to be your own boss. We have, and this could very well be in the current ordinance. I have a problem with it. We don't want to turn around and make Tehachapi into something that we are not. And that is if somebody wants to start a business in their back room, you know, selling doilies or whatever, you know, do we really need to go through the process of having something on the books to require them to get a home occupation permit?
Yeah.
And that's... Sorry, is it short? Okay. I disagree with that.
Can I just...
I'll let Jay speak for himself. You've got the conditions on it. Otherwise, you're going to have people parking in front yards and doing all kinds of business and residential developments.
I would just point out that I have a home business and the IRS likes it that I have this approved or that it was accepted.
Well, but the IRS, I totally agree with you, Susan, on that, that it's, you know, the IRS and the tax and the money side of it is one side of it. The other side of it is, you know, the ability to have that in your home. I think we had a question, Ms. Nixon, did you have a point or a comment?
I just wanted to make a comment.
I need you to come to the podium, I'm sorry.
Ken Nixon, I live in the city. I currently sit on the planning commission for the city and I have 13 years of previous experience on the planning commission for the city of Tehachapi. The zoning ordinance, and I understand some of your concerns, Councilwoman Hattie, but the zoning ordinance as it is now has evolved over a long period of time. Previously, when I sat on the planning commission, the reason those ordinances are there now is because of issues that took place previously and those ordinances needed to be written so that residents who live next to somebody who has a home occupation permit, that their property isn't being impacted by it. And banners downtown were out of control years ago and that's why that ordinance is there. The sign walkers, that was something that we spoke about in great detail at the planning commission meeting and agreed that if we don't make it fair for everyone, then we are in jeopardy of violating somebody else's rights and that leaves the city open for huge loss of possibility. So, the planning commission and what you're looking at now in the way of zoning ordinance that was reading the document, was rewritten in 2014, was from years of things taking place. Yes, we currently have wonderful business owners in the downtown area and throughout the city of Tehachapi, but that may not always be the case. And if we wait until something happens to come back and have restrictions and have requirements and have standards, then we are, you know, trying to catch up. The zoning ordinance that we are currently working under does need to have some changes and things to it. And staff is doing an incredible job working with a document that will always be evolving. It always will be. But I just wanted to say that what you're seeing did not come only in 2014. It's been worked on for years to get to the point that it is now.
Great, thank you. That's a great explanation, Ms. Nixon, thank you very much. The issue... Stand by for this in a second. My concern, and then I'll, we'll carry on, but my concern is a small business owner, a business owner in town, somebody that comes and wants to try their hand at doing something. They get the book out and they say, "Oh, my gosh, what have I got to do or what can't I do?" And that's, again, we're not Rosedale Highway, we're Tehachapi. And like I said before, we stand on our own merit up here. But I don't want to impede or impact somebody that could potentially be a good, solid business owner that wants to come up here and they get the book out and they say, "There's no way that I can work within all of these criteria to do what I'm, what I'm planning on doing." So, on that note, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Madam Mayor.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just on, on that point, from the economic development standpoint, the home occupation permit is actually a very useful tool for us because what happens is I check them on a regular basis because the home occupation is an incubator space. That's the first step, right? And so, they are doing this work at home. And so, I can get a chance, get a phone number, reach out, you know, a lot of times chat with them across the counter and they're coming in and they, they have an idea. And so, there's an understanding, they're starting in their home, but we get them all the resources we have available, the USDA has it available for small businesses. And then, we kind of keep tabs on them and check in. There's been a few businesses that have started in their homes that now have a storefront space or an office space and things like that. So, part of it, looking to it not only from regulatory standpoint, but also it's a tool for us to help out a lot of those small businesses. And then, on terms of the other things that happen in the book, a lot of those folks, we have an open dialogue. We say, "Come in, chat with us," and we sit down and a lot of times, we open the book and we talk about what can, can't be done and most of the time, they leave. "Great, thanks for helping," and then we work with those folks moving forward. So, there is a benefit to them by this kind of engaging, very friendly, perfect process for eventually this money go.
Yeah, that's great, thanks, Jorge. I think that's, that's a great, a great description of how that works. The unfortunate part of it is, when it doesn't work, guess who they call? They call us.
Yeah.
And when they call us, it's, you know, I mean, I don't know how many times I've heard, you know, it's like the old cartoon, it's wah-wah-wah-wah-wah-wah-wah. Nevertheless, there is concern and there's, there's validity to what those business owners are saying in regards to what they're not satisfied with when some of those things don't go their way. But nevertheless, I give the floor back. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's a great discussion. I think this is a great discussion we have tonight.
Ken, I think it's all fair. Can you, looking around this room, you and I are the only ones that are open, right?
No.
Well, we have a business. It's between you and...
Yeah, okay.
We're required by, by sales tax and all the rest, right? Whether you're like us, have a business outside of our home, if you're in your home and you're selling, aren't you, aren't you supposed to apply sales tax? And also, if we're in the city, we're required to have a city business license, aren't we?
I, I understand that and I agree with you 100%.
Just like you and I.
Yeah.
There's some things that we have to do. We have to apply sales tax, we have to have a use permit. And this guy over here makes me every month, every year, pay some money to the city for my business license.
Yeah, but we all know that you're rich, Carl, so...
Thank you.
Your point is well-taken and I completely accept that as a, as a good, valid position. Thank you. Okay, Mayor, back to you.
One more.
To the city. Ken, I have to give you kudos. You're the only woman that talks about issues that mean something to me. I don't know if any of the other four councillors took the time to read and study and question the document. I appreciate that. Did any of you other four take the time, read it, take notes, understand it, and question what was there? If any of you other four take the time, read it, take notes, understand it, and question what was there. And not a comment on...
We're not done here. We're not done with comments.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
All right. I have council comments.
In response to that, Mr. Jacob. As on council, way back before 2014, further than that, when signs were out of control in downtown and businesses and residents both wanted something to change. We had public workshops on the sign ordinance. We had tons of public input that developed into the sign ordinance as we have today. So it wasn't just something that happened overnight. Books for a while, we revamped a lot of stuff from a long time ago. So this, I think, is a good ordinance and you have to be careful. We're not Rosedale Highway. We're not in the county area where you can just plant a sign out in the field. We are in state limits, we are a city, we have rules. And I think we don't want to look like that. We want to be professional and dress it up. And people are still coming here and I've yet to have anyone come to me and say that we're being oppressive with the ordinance. So, but to answer your question, I've been with this ordinance as a living document since its inception, not just prior to this meeting. So I know totally background, how it developed and the input from the community, from the citizens and the business owners. And business owners, actually, you can take a whole, a good percentage are in favor of this because they want their business to look a professional way. And you don't want the guy next door to just love a sign out there, this is bigger and it doesn't meet the standard, now someone else is going to do it and it just goes exponential, out of control. At that point, now you're out of control trying to, now they're going to want to try to change the ordinance and want to be grandfathered in with their big ugly sign. So there's two sides to the story. And to answer your question, I've been involved with this thirty-two years. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Many years ago, my wife and I, we lived in Golden Hills and we remodeled our home so my wife could have her own business at home. We had a separate entrance, so if I didn't want people walking through my house, she was doing bookkeeping. And so we made that commitment and we had a separate entrance. And so we had people coming to our house seven days a week and my wife was doing bookkeeping. And it turned into a career. She went to school and now she does bookkeeping for the state of California. So I understand home businesses. We didn't have a whole slew of people over. You know, I had one or two people come over a day, but never a bunch of people. But I've been in the neighborhood where there is a local business going in with their own and it does create havoc in the neighborhood department. So I understand the ordinances that we have and we have to do something about it before it becomes a problem. I agree with everybody that wants to start a business, I'm for that. I think it's a great idea and because I basically received kudos for it. You know, we remodeled this home and it turned out to be a good thing. Well, we sold it, the people that bought our house had their own business. So it's worked out for another family. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? All right, then I'll entertain a motion as presented by staff.
I'll make a motion on staff's recommendations.
I'm sorry, yes, okay.
Make a motion on staff's recommendations. That's presented. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The record show it was a five, whoops.
Madam Mayor, I will, I'm not opposed to it, but I will abstain because I do have some fairly significant positions, convictions. Thank you, so it's a four to one extension.
All right, thank you very much. All right, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, I'll be quick. I wanted to say thank you to Craig, the department, Councilmember Smith, he, Cory, many others. We had, and especially to the North Side residents, we had a very, very successful cleanup day last Saturday. So successful, but we're planning another one. So mark your calendars on July thirteenth, correct, chief? Starting at seven AM until noon or when the dumpsters are full. We're going to bring out about six dumpsters. And when they're full or when people stop bringing items or we can stop collecting items because we do have a public works crew picking up some things for their trailers and so on and so forth, but couches, refrigerators, those sorts of things that people just don't have the ability to do themselves most of the time. So very successful, so I applaud all of the volunteers. We had some churches that were involved, a lot of volunteers. So thank you very much and again, very successful and we're going to have it on the thirteenth. And then obviously, end of the day, July fourth is just a couple days, on Thursday. It's a big celebration in the city of Tahatchee. Cory is managing that this year for us. We have pancake breakfast, head crabs more, pancake breakfast. You know, the five K run with the RBD, the bands in Central Park. We have the orchestra in Quivernet. We have bull riding, TMR egg, rodeo grounds. We have fireworks. At the end of the evening, starts at nine o'clock, twelve, the airport is, we've been doing it many times. We do have a bench that we set aside for our passary increments. Since the Tenille Plaza, so two o'clock on July fourth, two o'clock July fourth, the Tenille Plaza, we'll be having a little bench dedication for our passing.